Four items today. We had one work session with Amazon regarding lighting and signage. And then we're definitely going to have another work session, Nick, in two weeks with Amazon. Is that accurate?
Correct. And we'll have another work session with Verizon Data Center. We'll have two in four.
Verizon as well. Okay, that's great. Talk to me about the timing of that after, you know, tomorrow sometime. Okay, let's, can I have a motion to approve the minutes? I know there was a couple revisions, but.
I'll move. Peter, it's Kathy.
Thanks Kathy.
I'll second.
All right, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Kathy.
Thank you. Unanimous. We got Marshall's Plaza on a concept review for proposed driveway improvements and a roof access modifications. Who's here representing?
James Boglioli from Benderson Development.
James.
Hi, how are you? Can you see and hear me?
Hi James. Yep, we can hear you. Before we get started into the presentation, I just wanted to interrupt and let everybody know that the meeting will be recorded and it will be later displayed on the town website. And if everybody could please mute your microphones unless you are actively presenting or discussing the project.
Thank you Stephanie. Go ahead James.
All right, can I share my screen Stephanie?
Yes, you're welcome to do that. I also have the plans pulled up here.
I have it right here. So just, this is relatively straightforward. We have two items. One is entrance improvements. As you're familiar with this entrance, it doesn't really match the rest of the plaza as far as the landscaping and green space. Part of the entrance is in the DOT right of way and part of it's on our property. Assuming the planning board grants us approval, we're going to submit a permit to the DOT to make these improvements. I'll just quickly walk through them. There are three concrete islands, two triangular ones, and then one down the middle. Our plan is to re-curb the entire islands with brand-new curb, to rip out everything that's inside them, which is mostly gravel and asphalt, to sod the islands and add planter beds for annuals, which we'll do every year, and then to add new concrete sidewalks in the islands and add a new crosswalk all the way across the driveway, and then finally to repaint all the area in gray so that it looks finished when we're done. So that's the first part of the project. Are there any questions on that?
Yeah, let's open it up to the board. Let's take it one at a time. Stephanie, do you have anything you wanted to mention?
Yes, right off the bat, we're really excited to see these improvements here. We agree that it's not in line with the rest of the driveway and it would be better to set the tone upon the entrance into the site. We were thinking this would be also an opportunity to sort of clarify the flow of traffic into the site. A few people have mentioned that when you're hanging a left into the plaza, that it's really unclear which part of the partition, I'm sorry, that curved landscape island in the middle, people are worried that they're going to take the wrong side of that. So if there could be some signage or different way to sort of clarify the flow of traffic through there.
We could certainly look at some signage Stephanie. I usually go in that site or off the side road, but I'll take a look at it and see if we can do something. We can't bring the island any further out because of the crosswalk and the sidewalk, so maybe a sign out there.
Yeah, keep right sign would be good. I've watched people cut the corner several times, I've even been behind them and they kind of clip that corner going through the left.
I think a sign, I've seen those signs, so we'll look at having a sign put there.
James, I don't know, you may know the answer to this, or Jamie, are we allowed to ask for, you know, how they put the curb paint on the road? I know that doesn't help in the winter, but you know, I think it helps steer you right in when we have it. I know we have it up going on to Kenny Road when they're making a turn, so it helps keep people in line. I know this is only one lane, but would that be a possibility?
Certainly, it's at least an option if, you know, we can ask for. You're talking about being it right in the roadway.
Yes. It leads right to that area.
Maybe when James is talking to the DOT, the permit, he can request that.
Yeah, we can request that as part of our DOT permit. We haven't gotten a DOT yet because we wanted to get through the, we're looking for a NAG deck from the town, so we wanted to get through this process and then submit for the permit. But I know what you're talking about, that curved painted line that kind of directs people into the lane. We can certainly ask DOT about that.
Okay, James, I've already gazed on. Doug, I just wanted to say one thing though, that the landscaping and everything leading into that plaza is exquisite.
Thank you.
I get compliments all the time. And also all of the work that you've done to line up those, the traffic management has been exemplary.
And we found that the traffic is flowing much better in the shopping center. I know we're not there all the time, and you all are, but our property managers sat there and watched it, and I think it is flowing a lot better. All the improvements have made it better.
Yeah, it was a process.
Yep.
It was a lot under construction, but no, you were to be commended. Okay, Doug, I apologize.
That's okay. This is more a question for the town. In terms of our liaison to the DOT, this section of Erie Boulevard, the pavement is in horrible condition. And are, have we advocated for any sort of improvements just in general at this intersection?
Maybe James could bring it up when he's meeting with them.
I'm happy to bring it up, but that's something on a grander scale that the town would have to push. They're going to look at me. I mean, they're going to be happy I'm putting, you know, fixing their area to the side, but I don't know if they'll do that kind of work or advocate it. So I'm happy to work with the town on it if you want to set up.
Well, no, I'm actually maybe asking this more towards our town.
Yeah.
To push more for it.
And I think, I don't, I'm not aware of anybody that's advocated for it, and usually these projects are actually kind of scheduled, so they may go like with an eight or 10-year cycle. I would say that the work that was done farther west with the Erie Canal, the Empire Trail, they're going to have to do some roadwork down there where they have to fill in along the new curbing and patch some areas. I have a feeling that this is probably slated to be milled and topped again in the very near future. I think that's why we're seeing it in such bad shape is that it's, they don't really want to patch anymore. I think the thing's really slated for being remilled and recapped.
Okay.
But I'll look into it and find out what their schedule is.
Thank you. Go ahead James, the next, the latter.
The next, yeah, the next is the ladders. I'm usually going to pull up the site plan.
Actually, there are a couple other notes that I wanted to convey to James on the driveway improvements here. I think that was just the biggest thing, was clarifying the flow of traffic into the site. We're also looking at potentially requesting some more perennial plant material. It seems like your proposal just includes annuals. So throughout the winter months, it would be great to have some type of variety, whether it is grasses, such as the type that you have there existing. You can see them in the photo to the left.
We could look into that.
Okay. And then a pretty standard requirement per the design guidelines in the town is where there is new sidewalk, it should be continuous along the flow of the driveway. So instead of having the asphalt strip, it should be a concrete pavement that continues through there, and where possible to have it transition at a 90-degree perpendicular angle as you cross the driveline.
Okay.
Thanks Stephanie.
Steph, the other one, did we talk about the idea of where these crosswalks cross the actual drive lanes should be perpendicular to the fall of the curves?
Yes, I know that it's probably a little bit tight there. You can see that the adjacent building, that's to the right of the driveway there, I think it's the Vitamin Shop, Vitamin World, whatever that building is. It's going to make that a little bit tight through there, especially when you're considering the grade change. But there, again, there is the expectation that where pedestrians are crossing, especially where there's a really wide angle, that the cars are kind of like speeding in through the side here, they should be crossing 90 degrees perpendicular.
Okay. Is that it Stephanie?
For the driveway improvements, yes.
Yes, thank you. The ladders, not as flattering.
The ladders, let me back up. As we recently constructed the two buildings, the 10K building, which is Building B, hasn't been up for a while. Building A, I believe we finished that too long ago and currently has a tenant. We need to add two roof access ladders, or one to each building. They're shown on the plan, one here in the side over by the dumpsters. We tried to hide that from the most visible three areas of the site, and one on the back of the 10K, just going through the elevations if they load up. This is the 10K building that's got core life in it, and you can see the ladder located there in that indent of the building. And then the other one is the 7K, which is located right here between the two transitions of the side of the building on the south side, which is located in this area, right by the dumpsters.
Okay, with all the architects, we discussed this in our work session, Blake, Doug, I'd like to discuss our summation of our opinions.
So I, I'm not a big fan of these ladders. I don't know why we need them on the exterior of these buildings. Can we maintain roof access another way, either internally or?
We have no, we have no other way for roof access at this point. The 10K is fully leased and there's no space inside the building for any roof, and they take up too much room. I mean, they're hidden, I mean, the one building that we hid them on both.
Do you have to have a mounted ladder? Or do we follow in the guideline of a single-story building where you can have a temporary ladder?
This is required by the building code, which I provide as part of the exhibit. I don't believe a temporary ladder meets that requirement.
Is it, the requirement, is it building code? Is it a fire, or what's the issue?
Equipment and appliances, a roof, elevated structures, this is the section of the code I attached to part of the letter. If you've got to climb higher than 16 feet above grade. So we're above 16 feet.
I think, so right now, the biggest objection is that these buildings don't really have a backside. All four sides are so prominent, they're handsome, and they really are out of place. So this is a real challenge. We talked about this the other day, and I've offered some code commentary. For example, the cages are not required, actually they're not allowed anymore by code. That's my code interpretation. I've seen that through OSHA as well. So at the very least, I would expect that those would go away. It would be less offensive if they absolutely have to go where they're shown.
Yeah, the cages are what really kept getting me visually against such a good-looking building. You know, it's, if we can just lose the cages.
I'd also like to explore the, if temporary ladders could meet the code.
Go get up there James. It's 16 feet, correct?
It is, it is over 16 feet.
To the roof edge?
We'll step over.
Well, I would like confirmation on whether the temporary would be approvable.
How tall, just how tall is it? 16 foot, 17 foot?
Let me see if our, I don't have the height on these elevations.
You put an eight-inch landing pad at the bottom, they kind of, eight inches shorter.
I don't have the height on these colored elevations. They were on the hard line, we got approved, so I could have that snapped on there.
Well, let's, I'd like to explore the other option, certainly the cage being removed, but also if a temporary ladder will suffice for code.
I'm happy to look into that.
I appreciate it. Andy, would you also, you know, just double check this for future reference, because it's not a question we normally ask the applicant, whether they have indoor ladders or access. So I'm just surprised that, like we said, we spent so much time designing these. They're really handsome buildings, and they do have, they're really four-sided buildings. And this is a huge mistake aesthetically.
Can you check for both minimum and maximum heights? Right, so if any of those roof elevations is less than 16, you might be okay.
Yep. Yeah, even if it's over the front.
Yep, will do.
Thank you. Anything else, James?
That's it.
Thank you. Again, congratulations on, this is the first time we've been able to really see it in a mature setting and it's working very well.
Okay. Stephanie, are you going to issue a comment memo, Stephanie?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, once I anticipate receiving that, just so I can have it responded to and get back in.
Probably first thing in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks James.
Thank you.
Shopping Town subdivision, Jamie, do you want to tackle this?
Sure. So, and is anyone here from the county? Pat?
Yes, my name is Patrick Hill Martin. I'm here on behalf of the county, and I believe Dan Koznowski from the county's planning department was scheduled to be on. I can't see him yet.
So this.
I'm here, Pat. I'm Jamie.
Hi Patrick.
Good evening everyone.
Dan Koznowski is on as well?
I'm here, yes.
Okay, so just as a quick summary, this is part of the settlement of the bankruptcy court ongoing litigation with, the county taking over much of this Shopping Town project. And this piece needs to be subdivided off. It's got some arrangement, I don't think we need to go into, but it does need subdivision approval. So the main issues that are out there are just our usual subdivision regulations, and it looks like they probably meet most everything. Mark has looked at it. He's looked at the utilities. There are going to need to be cross easements for access, and I believe cross easements for utilities. And I got a note earlier, it was late yesterday, about the county needing some language for that, and I will work on that. So I guess I'll let Stephanie make any comments she's got on the subdivision.
Jamie, just that we discussed previously, Dan, about the opportunity for ingress and egress, if that should change due to the new developer.
Yes, we had talked in a work session, Pat, about this access being movable in the future. And we'd like that to be addressed because we don't want to hamstring this development in any way that this is going to be the only access. So if some wonderful developer comes in and can change that access, as long as they're given the appropriate access to the site, we'd like to talk about that as being a movable or relocatable access.
And just to clarify, in terms of the access that you're referencing, are you referencing the access off of Erie Boulevard?
Yes.
Yes.
I mean, even if it's off of Erie Boulevard, it might also influence, you know, the access off of the.
Yeah, the drive-through.
Way, yeah.
This is Dan. So this site, you know, went through site plan review in 2000, and there is no curb cut off Erie Boulevard for the parcel that we're creating. So I have kind of access off of what is now Shopping Town Drive, which is a private drive from a signalized intersection. So what we're proposing, and what we will work out language with Jamie on, is basically we will grant an easement to the town, and that way it doesn't really matter who owns either parcel in the future. And then, but we can work that out. I think we can work that language out, so if Shopping Town Mall Drive moves or changes, or the access has to change, that easement would still apply.
Yes, so I hear what you're saying. Usually it's the, it's access between the two properties and that runs to the benefit of the town. So you're suggesting that this access be granted actually to the town. That's certainly, I think that's okay too. That wasn't what I had in mind. That's not how we usually do it, but I'm open to that.
I think that would work.
Might even probably even be better.
Yeah, variation on the theme. But you understand what we're looking for, Dan, Pat, just to, I don't want to be hamstrung. It's a tough, you know, there are a lot of traffic that comes around that corner.
Sure, understood. I appreciate that.
Especially if you're coming in from the left side and with the traffic coming in from the opposite direction when they merge, and you try to make that turn. So I foresee that being changed. But, okay, Jamie, anything else that you need?
I think that we're probably ready to call for a public hearing on it, as that's what's required in our code for the next thing. Stephanie, did you have any comments?
No, outside of access and parking, I don't think that there were really many questions. I pointed out that there were some down trees on the property, as well as some segmented fences that the board may wish to see cleaned up and addressed as part of the subdivision. But as far as any other site issues, I think this one can go ahead.
Okay, Jamie, I'll let you handle that.
We can probably handle that. We can probably handle that through the codes portion. I don't think it's a task to handle through here.
Okay, that sounds good. Just to give Pat and Dan, just so we're on the right timeline. So once we have the public hearing for the next meeting, what's the next step to keep this on schedule?
So we can approve it at the next meeting. It may or may not be subject to finalization of the easements if we're satisfied with the plan as it's presented.
Okay. Is that satisfactory to Pat and Dan?
That'd be just fine. I greatly appreciate that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
That'll be our plan. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion on the public hearing? Jamie, do you want to word that for us?
Nope, you're off. Mic's off.
I'm off. Yeah.
Going away?
Yeah.
You need a motion on that public hearing, Jamie.
Yes, motion to call for a public hearing on the subdivision for this project Shopping Town. On, what's the date? So who's got the dates?
January 28.
Okay, January 28.
I'll make that motion.
7:05 PM.
Yep.
By Zoom.
I'll second it.
Thanks Doug.
I'll second it, yeah.
All in baby. Joe, aye.
Doug, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Kathy, aye.
Peter, aye.
Jenny, aye.
Kevin, aye.
Kevin, thank you.
And who made that? Who seconded it? Peter made it second by?
Doug.
Doug.
Thank you. Thank you Doug.
Okay. Good night, light comments.
Good evening, everybody. This is Joanne.
Good join.
So I wanted to go through this, the concept review.
Excuse me, I just want to just reiterate that Stephanie will accuse herself for any comments and that if we have any consultant information, it'll go through. Jamie and Mark, you on here, Mark?
I guess he's not on right now for this concept.
I'll count on you to field any questions relating to the EDR. Thank you. For Nick.
Okay, great. Well, first, I'd like to start out, Peter, thank you for meeting with us, and Andy, in the work session that we had a few weeks ago, right in the middle of the holidays. So today, we have with you our team, which is myself, Kyle Vols, and Joe Felco are also here, and Jim Niddle from.
Joanne, my second, again, who is with us tonight?
Yes. You have me, Joanne Gagliano. We have Joe Felco, Kyle Vols, and we have Jim Niddle from In Architects, and we have Grazzi Zazara also here tonight. So our team is, you know, we've been working together with Jim, and as I said, Grazzi's been talking to the board and to Peter for a while, the town in general, about trying to bring some development to the site. What we wanted to do in meeting with Andy and getting some input on the zoning, is we wanted to come in tonight with the survey and a very general layout, which is showing basically areas on a site plan to discuss. But what we want to talk about first is the, pretty much the site analysis. The plan is before you. This is a survey that we currently have, and we're in the process of getting the additional survey for the former Pier 1 site. So right now, we have topo for the lots that you see before you. And this, as you know, this site sits between Bridge Street and Sealy Drive and Erie Boulevard. So in looking at the site, it's now made up of multiple parcels at this time still. You can see the divisions on the plan. It does abut the right-ofways of Bridge Street and Erie Boulevard. And there actually is a parcel between Erie Boulevard right-of-way and all of the other parcels that are owned by Grazzi. So the tricky issue here, right, is that it looks like we have a perceived four fronts to this site, this chunk of site. Now, I guess, you know, it's a visual front on Erie Boulevard because there is a lot next to it. But in developing the site and utilizing the setbacks that are required, you know, we really wanted to get some input on your part tonight. We also know that this is a site that's been discussed a lot as far as the LWRP goes for Sealy Drive, so we will show you that in a minute. But, you know, here, we can slip over to that. So knowing that there's a greater master plan for this area, we want to be cognizant about, you know, there really are four fronts, because, you know, whether it's this design or something with this potential, we have a neighborhood on one side, and we have Bridge Street on the other. So in developing it, it's really important that we think about the future, and we think about what works best for Grazzi's development, and also the rest of the development in the town. So if we go back to the survey, there's also, in addition to the yards and how we use those setbacks, there's also this grade change that happens across the site, which is more, you can probably perceive it a little bit more now that the buildings are down. But from the Erie Boulevard side or the property line of this parcel, you have about 14 feet of grade change moving downward toward the Pier 1 building. We don't know how much more grade change we have with Pier 1. It's not, it's probably maybe three to four feet until we get the survey, but it just shows you that we have this slope that's happening there, which gives us some opportunities on the site. Some of them, I guess I could look at them as positive, and some I could look at negative. We'll talk about that when Jim talks a little bit about the architecture and the layout of the buildings as they are right now. But given the fact that in order to make the steep slope go away, you know, you would have to push down the grade at the intersection of Erie and Bridge on the site, so that we can kind of eliminate some of the slope. But what that does is it actually pushes Chick-fil-A or, you know, whatever development is on that corner, pushes it down. So its proximity to Erie Boulevard and Bridge Street in a vertical way is, maybe it's a good thing because it hides some of the cars and the parking, and it lets the Empire State Trail, which is now another focus area of the site. Maybe it helps with that, but we also don't want to lose the prominence of that building on the corner. So there's a lot to experience here. The New York State Trail, as you know, has been built. It seems like it's getting a lot of use already, and we're in the winter months. So I think that's a really good thing for Grazzi's development, and also the people that are passing through in the town. So we do want to focus on connections to that, which, you know, is difficult when you have a development that has a lot of cars and you have four fronts. Again, you know, there's really not a backside. So we have to really think about how we do that. And again, looking to you for some commentary there. One of the things we'd like to talk about too is the visibility. The way this has been thought of right now is that the buildings are more related to Sealy Drive, but their view is coming, is from Bridge Street. The one thing we have to remember is Bridge Street actually has. The one thing we have to remember is Bridge Street actually has a right of way that's a drainage right of way. So it has a very large area of fragmites and these large grasses that you're familiar with driving down and seeing, and that's state property. And they really don't maintain that. They, once in a while, mow it just to actually clean the ditch. So there is going to be a lot of screening of the parking lot section. So, you know, thinking about should the parking lot be more related to Bridge Street? Because you really won't see it as much because we have all this vegetation. Now, if that vegetation were to be mowed at some point, then you'd see the cars. But the buildings are in the background in, in the way that we're looking at it right now. Again, something to talk about. And then the other item is the drive-through. If, if this is to be a Chick-fil-A, which is what is proposed on the corner, a drive-through is required. That's really the focus of their business. The fact that these could be all considered four fronts, that poses a problem with the drive-through because it's prohibited in the front. So again, it's something to talk about. So I think the next step should be, you know, this, keep in mind again, this plan is extremely preliminary. You know, Jim will tell you that it was put together, you know, to, to try to meet some of the goals of the, of the tenants and the client and try to create this feeling of a, of a larger development. But there's a lot of things about it that, you know, aren't complying with the code at this point and don't necessarily work because of the steep slope. So things would have to change. But I want, you know, Jim's thought a lot about how the buildings will work, the size of the buildings and how they lay out on the site. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Jim. And then, once we present that, we can take your questions and you can give us a lot of your feedback, which is really going to help us because we really want to go right back to the drawing board and come back with a refined plan. Even as of now, we've received a plan, a Chick-fil-A prototype that's different than what we've put in front of you. So we're ready to hear your comments and then move into the next step for Grazzi. So Jim, why don't you take it away from there and Kyle can get your drawings up.
Sure. Thanks, Joanne. Want to bring up the site plan? So, so as Joanne just summarized very well, we're still at a very preliminary basis here. And we, we appreciate you guys letting us come here to kind of present this to you and work through some of the issues. Obviously, the, the, the desire to have the Chick-fil-A up on this end of the site presents some of the issues that Joanne just spoke about. The drive-through is, definitely has some visual impact. And we're working, we still have to work through with Chick-fil-A, how do we take their prototype, their typical building and make something that's compatible with what we'd want to do with the rest of the site? The second building on here, on, on the site is approximately, right now is approximately 13,000 square feet of retail space. Grazzi's working with a couple tenants. I think he's had some conversations with Peter on, on some of these. And then the third building is the existing Pier One building, which we would give a bit of a facelift to and tailor that to the future tenants for that, for that building. Now, as Joanne mentioned, we have approximately 14 feet of grade difference here. So the, the site really becomes kind of a three-part site. Sort of a, we'll call it plateau area of one here for Chick-fil-A. We're dropping down to this next building and then the existing Pier One building is further down. The, visually, I think as Joanne just mentioned, this wants to be something that's perceived as a retail complex, retail center from, from the Bridge Street intersection and, and driving down Bridge Street. But we also realize that we, we need to create some kind of presence from Sealy Drive as well, which is where people are really entering the site and coming in. So as we move forward with this, we, we have to take into account the fact that there are multiple fronts to this and multiple viewing points for, for this site as well. So. I don't know if you, Joanne, you want to, or Kyle, you want to move into some of the elevation views? So again, and.
Just a, just a quick second on, I don't know if this is the exact time, just to, if, if it's okay if we entertain a couple of questions. One of the things in your, your parking, the counts for three buildings, is there, you know, the, it looks like it's very underparked.
Yes, you're correct. At this point, at this point, we're underparked. We've had some indications from, Joanne alluded to another plan we just received from Chick-fil-A, where they're actually looking for less parking, less fixed parking and, and their current thinking is it's more important to them to have the drive lanes and have the, the ability to stack for the drive lane. Anybody who's seen what's happened through the past year knows that it's very important that they can stack cars for the drive lane without impacting traffic on Sealy Drive or other parts of the site. So I don't know if we want to show that at this point. It's just something that's come to light to us. But they're actually looking for, they're looking for approximately the same amount of cars that they might need based on your code. But more of it, more of it in a drive aisle stacking situation than an actual fixed parking. Which leads us to this retail facility here where we know we are, in fact, underparked. There is an opportunity across the street, Grazzi owns some property over here, that we may have some opportunities to create some additional parking if needed or have parking in reserve off-site as well.
And there, we were hoping to, potentially, we might be able to have some on-street parking if that were, because that was part of the original LWPR master plan. So maybe there'd be a few parking spaces we could do there as well. But, you know, we'd have to, again, it could be a reserve too in, in case we needed them.
Right, right. And, and, and still keeping in mind the future for this whole potential master plans.
Well, that's going to be one of the biggest issues we'll, we'll need a resolution on. But these are high-impact retail establishments for, for the most part.
So I, Grazzi, if there's anything you wanted to add?
The drive-through part for the Chick-fil-A, if the Chick-fil-A is the tenant, I, I think by making the towpath a one-way right now, really, Chick-fil-A is going to come in to do it. This is a, a great location to do it because you, you're not, you're not blocking Bridge, you're not blocking Erie Boulevard and you have a real easy access out on towpath. So that seems like a super corner for this to happen. I mean, it's a, for the good of the town, good for the tenant. And like Joanne said, as far as them, they want more cars in line. Been down to Florida recently and it just, that's where all their traffic is. It's in their, it's in their drive-through. Very, very, I, I think the building's actually smaller now, isn't it, Jim?
Yes. It's interesting that the building is about probably half the size. And their car count, different than many, you know, establishments, their car count includes cars that are in the drive lane. I think the next plan, you know, you're going to see a shrink in the building, you know, and I got to believe that, you know, COVID has something to do this too, right? You're not going to utilize the buildings, at least in the near future, as much as you would.
The future of the buildings.
Yeah.
Fast food right now, if you don't have a drive-through, you're wasting your time. There's no interest in, in doing the sit-down.
Yeah, yeah. And it's actually an interesting concept. They have a greater number of stacking cars in line than actual fixed parking. Which on off-hours means a drastically reduced parking field for these people, which, which is, is not necessarily a bad thing. So you want to move along here? Let's take a look. Peter, are you?
Yeah. No, I'm good. I, I just, I just, that's just, you know, in the first blush, that's one of the biggest issues we've got to address.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I agree. So Kyle, back to the next. So again, very preliminary and we understand this is, this is a very flat world we're looking at here. But we, what, the things we have to work out is how these, the, how the site and how the parking steps down for the 12 to 14 feet that we're talking about. One of the things we're thinking about is if, you know, the footprint of the Chick-fil-A site can actually drop down a few feet, which may not be a bad thing if we're stacking cars around here. If, if everything sits down a little bit, it takes the emphasis off of the car stacking and perhaps the building can be a little higher and, and, and make a little bit more of the emphasis on the building, on the corner, the image of the building and, and less on the car stacking. Then if we could gain some feet or lose some feet on this end, then that helps us with our tiering as we go down through the site. Kyle, the next. And this is a, this is an image of the center building. A combination of contemporary and, and a little bit more traditional architecture. Finding a balance between what we're doing with the Chick-fil-A and their prototype is typically brick and, and some ephesus and we'll want to work with, with them to come up with something a little different that's a little more compatible with the site. And next, Kyle. And then depending on the final tenants for the Pier One building, we'd be looking to do some kind of facelift on that building, create some of the same elements that we're working with in the other building, just to kind of round out the site and to, to kind of create three buildings that are different in, in some ways, but, but similar so that this is one, this really feels like one retail center.
I was at the, I was at the site today and, you know, the Pier One, very conspicuous. I mean, very prominent.
Yeah.
Is that possible to have a more of a flavor that your second building has?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You got to start modulating that, that exterior skin to pull up the detailing bands, even if it isn't more of a solid block.
Yeah, very, yeah. Everything, we're open for anything at this point without having real tenants in place. You know, we don't know exactly what we're doing here. But yeah, I, I agree to, to make it a little bit more compatible to the middle building, which, which if you go back to the middle building, I think it's a nice-looking building would complement the neighborhood. You know, kind of a, bring, bringing something new and modern to the site, but something that still will have some lasting power.
Yep.
And that, that, that Pier One is, again, it's, it's, it's such a signature. And if you tie the two together, it would, it could have much more synergy.
Yeah.
To the complex.
Yeah, I agree with that. And then, and then that would lend itself to Chick-fil-A if, if that was something different. And, and they're going to have some input as to what they want their building to look like. But at least these two buildings would be, would be anchoring the center.
Jim, how do you see, I, I know this is preliminary, but this center building is lined up parallel-ish with Bridge Street. And I know that's where this grade is dropping off. How do you see, any thoughts on how you're going to handle the grade change along this long facade, which is, you know, nicely all balanced at one level now?
Yeah, so we, we have to, we know, we've had, we've had some discussions with Joanne. And what we'll have to do, Leif, this will have to step down. This won't be on a flat plane like this. Most likely, the, the northern end of it is going to have to step down. And we're going to have to play some games with the elevation and with the grade changes.
Has there been any thought yet, I know, again, it's early on, about the idea of the building sitting in the, inside the ring of all the traffic and, and drive lanes versus letting these buildings form some form of edge to the Bridge Street side that, that defines that and turning the, the, you know, the other side on Sealy into the corded side that turns it into a more of a pedestrian scaled campus kind of approach?
Yeah. Well, again, we're, we're cognizant of the whole master plan. So, you know, and as we deal with some of the site issues here, this building very well may turn. You know, at one point, we had this building perpendicular to this, which in some ways helps with what you're speaking about, Leif, and also helps with the, with the grading issue of how we tear us down the site. So it's one of the things we want to take a look at next and, and see if this is really the best configuration. And, and with any retail building, we understand there's a backside somewhere. So, you know, we want that backside hidden a little more if we're on Sealy Drive. You know, where do we put the dumpster? Where do we put, where do we service the building? So those are all things that, that our next step will be to really address.
My next comment is just simple for you guys, is the, I like the impression of this image that I'm seeing right now. I also like if, if we could, you know, pull those defined elements that you have in the darker tones out so that your gold, yellowish gold element on top set back in. So those, those masses read as nicely defined rhythmic forms with the glass base pushed back with the big, you know, bed roof folding over the top. So. I can only ask.
I, I, we'll, we'll take that all into account. Thank you.
Well, the key is going to be, you know, and I know how the national franchises are, but if I think that Pier One is going to be a paramount location, a corner, Chick-fil-A is going to need to really step up their game architecturally.
Yeah, and Peter, you bring up a good point. The, the Pier One building could be the, could very well be the dominant feature here. It's kind of the, you know, the monument to this project, to the site. So.
Well, I stood across the street, just, just, just wanting to look at it. And as you come by it, it's, it's so visible, whether you're coming up towards Erie Boulevard or, or you're in that plaza and there's some plans for Cravat Drive, et cetera. This is a highly traffic, very visible, I, I think.
Especially now because it's the only thing left standing. So.
Yeah, I.
This is Jenny. I, I, is it all right if I have, so I, I was wondering if anybody has been out to the Chick-fil-A in Cicero or any of the other Chick-fil-A's around? Because the Chick-fil-A there, the traffic has actually, I feel, cut down business in other areas because the lines of traffic block cars from moving. It, it is, it's difficult. And I, I think even though sometimes it's a surge that, where the traffic is getting blocked, but I, I think that should be considered because if the traffic wraps around a couple sides of these other retail buildings, I don't think you could get a high-end retail store to want to be in the middle of that.
Well, if I may, the location of the Chick-fil-A is kind of a, you know, it's a mixed blessing. It's, it's right there on the corner where it, you know, first blush, we might say that's not the place for it. But it's also the, the best place for it for just that reason, Jenny, that the traffic flow will be up there and it'll be the, the rush hour congestion will be on that end of the site and it won't impact as much, this part of the site. We do have a new layout that, that we just saw the other day from Chick-fil-A that actually takes a lot of that into account and really does kind of concentrate their drive lane queuing issues up on that end of the site. You know, the flip side of that is we have that queuing rate on that prominent corner. So how we deal with that and, like I said, maybe we bring that site down a little bit. Maybe we can find other ways to, you know, it's, it's, it's a balance of screening the cars and, and, and the drive lane. But also making, making sure that the, the building is visible and the site is not, you know, it's not hidden from view because this is a prominent location. We want, you know, as, as, for Grazzi, he wants people to see this site. And, and hopefully we can do a good enough job that, you know, this is a really, you know, a prominent site for the town. And hopefully we can do a good enough job that, you know, this is a really, you know, a prominent site for the town.
Well, I think what I'm hearing is not so much that, that it's a prominent site, it's a prominent location for Chick-fil-A. And for me, putting, I think you have a really significant vehicle circulation problem on this site. And I'm not sure how you're going to overcome it. It, it does disturb me a little bit that that is the most prominent component of this development. Looking at double stacked parking at a drive-through, again, it's such a prominent location on this corner. So, you know, that, that certainly disturbs me a little bit, just the way that this has been laid out. Maybe also, also too.
Doug, we could show you, we have that other concept that they just sent, so you can kind of see how they isolate it. So maybe it'd be good to show you that. So.
Did they move it to three lanes? Because I have been to a couple that have three.
I would just say, you know, I would show that, Joe.
But unlike other areas, like up at Cicero, it really does block some of the people coming into the center. Really does create traffic flow problems. I, you know, I hate to even bring this up, but, you know, Starbucks down, you know, down, down the road here. Cars are stacking near Erie Boulevard. This, this takes that element, that car, those, that traffic stacking out of Bridge and out of Erie and gets it, gets it completely out of the way. So in that respect, it's a good thing.
Well, I would just, I would agree with both Doug and Jenny in terms of, I've been to the Chick-fil-A. It didn't help that they put a Starbucks within 100 feet of that. And you've got the two and the Home Depot traffic merging. That's a very difficult thing, but I also want to make sure aesthetically, and Jenny's point, that I don't know who will want to be a retail neighbor of, of some of these high-impact uses. So it is, it is going to be challenging, but go ahead on your new, your new drawing. I see you've got it up.
Before the new drawing comes up, can I ask the question, maybe it's, it's an elephant in the room. But not very long ago, I, I was involved in a discussion about there being a light that would come in off of Erie Boulevard. I'm sorry, off of Bridge Street directly into the site and there would be a new light and so forth. And I'm wondering what happened to those discussions.
So that. Joanne, do you want me to? So that, that light was, was a write-in off of Bridge Street before the opportunity to bring in the Pier One site as well. So now that, now that Grazzi controls all three sites, or all four sites in this case, that, that, that write-in is not really necessary anymore because now we have the opportunity to come in right on Sealy. Which also gets that intersection further away from the bridge near intersection, so.
I, I don't think that was what was discussed. I think the light was for the intersection. The write-in wouldn't need a light. And I think we're still, the town is still very interested in, in pursuing that. Because we feel that it's not just good for this project, but it's good for reducing curb cuts further down, regulating traffic and speed on Bridge Street. Stopping people cutting across three lanes to get into the other side.
Well, no, we're not, we're not suggesting there, there may not be a light at Sealy. This was, this was an additional turn into the site between Erie Boulevard and Sealy. Which just created one more element in that, in that.
Is that the write-in only?
That was the write-in only. That was halfway between Erie and Sealy.
Yeah, that was more because we didn't have control over that intersection where Pier One is. But now we'd have to do some traffic investigation and decide what those improvements would be right at this connection to Sealy, which is really a safer situation. So it's not that there wouldn't be those items, Jamie, it's just in a different place. Because now there's access that, all the way down to the former Pier One.
Okay.
Has there been discussions, has there been discussions with the state as far as their concerns, traffic and anything yet, or no?
Not as of yet, no. Because we want to make sure we understand what the load is on the site from the building square footage before we do that, so that it, it makes sense, you know, we're not doing it twice. So like we said, this is really just testing out, you know, what it is that was being requested by the tenants. And now we have to fine tune that.
I, I think as a board, it would be really helpful for us to see sort of the evolution of your thoughts and the layout on this site. Because there's a lot of moving parts and there's a lot of variables. And we're just looking at one of them right now, but I have, I have lots of questions about how you arrived at this layout still. And I think that would be very helpful in a work session.
Yeah, we'd love to.
So, so for example, yeah, so for example, I'm really intrigued. And I had never really seen this until I've seen it on paper. Kind of the artifact left over from towpath and the Erie Canal where elevating Erie is now connecting over on the site. And kind of that, that diagonal kind of cut across the front. I'm not sure what the final landscaping and some of the site features are planned. And how they're going to fully kind of bloom and blossom there as part of that connection. But it seems to me that would be a really, a really nice kind of public gesture to the site if there's a way to connect, to connect to that. And maybe you've explored that, but I think that would be a really nice gesture.
Yeah, we've talked about it and, you know, and Grazzi has talked about too, what opportunities there are to have almost like festival site. And, you know, there's, in the summertime when there's a lot of traffic here. And I've even thought about, perhaps we should be thinking about a variance to get that, get the buildings a little bit closer to that public space. You know, that to me is justified because there is a lot of room there. And you want people to be able to sit, you know, even lies the patio, which is on that side of the building, along with the recreational area, because I do think people would stop and eat there. There's also opportunities for Grazzi to produce some, you know, recreational area or some retail area for some of the operations that he has, which I think people would really enjoy, like he's done at the state fair. You know, at, at a lower level that, you know, it's mostly pedestrian or bike traffic, but I totally agree. And correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about that early on when you were talking about even a different building there.
Personally, hearing what you're describing is, it's kind of exciting. And I, I think it helps to anchor that corner. And I wonder if it's a way to kind of book in the site. You got the Pier One and the developments on the, on the lower section. And you've got something here on the upper section to organize, to help with circulation, to kind of anchor it.
Intrigued too. Also, break it up a bit.
Yeah, and also, we were involved when Ed had us looking at like the big, the master plan for the LWRP. And looking at how this could actually be an interpretive area too for the canal. And there would be actually fishing docks or spaces that you could move onto the canal area. And that's exactly what Grazzi was interested in, you know, so that there is more to it than literally a restaurant. So you can see here there is trails, there are overlooks. There were features that buffered the traffic in, at Erie Boulevard. That would be like a phase one project to get going, where you'd have maybe some piers set in the water. Go through the permitting to get that through the town as a phase one through DOS. And actually start to develop this nature park that becomes part of this development. So long-term, the plan is really great, I think, for this. And it very much suits a restaurant. And so I think you're right, Doug, and I, I think it bears more study. The problem is because it's a front setback, it's really pushing the building away from it. But I think we have a really good justification to go to the zoning board and talk about how we integrate these two areas. Which also gives us more room to isolate Chick-fil-A from the rest of the development.
Hmm. Of course, the mixed use which, which can go here would allow that to happen, for it to be pulled up to the road.
Right, and also maybe give us, if we had office and we had retail, which is kind of, is what's proposed in the larger building, it would afford us the ability to put parallel parking on, given the overlay. So, you know, it, it starts to make a community or a neighborhood in this area, you know, to get it started. Even though there's a, you know, a lot further that it needs to go. And there's other properties there that still need to be cleaned up and dealt with, but it's a, it's a first step. So that's why it's so important to us that we came here tonight to really think through what you were thinking, you know, and, and how you see this plan relating to what it is that we're trying to accomplish here. So it's, it's really important to us and Grazzi that this is like a flagship for this new development.
The more this building pops up into the corner and creates a visual anchor there and shields what happens on the inner, inner ring, I think is a, is a strong move.
I, I agree.
How do we deal with those drive-through is a prohibition? Is it allowed? A variance allowed? Or can we look at the front, it's not really a front along Erie Boulevard, it's a visual front, so.
I'll, I'll look, I will look at that, Joanne.
Because I think the land is owned by the state, but I, Andy and I couldn't really figure it out. Based on the tax maps, we don't know if it's DOT, Canal Corp. It doesn't really say. I think the town was trying to pick up that piece of property, that corner piece, given the, the fact that the trail was going through. But I really don't, I don't, nobody can really figure out, Jamie, where, who, who owns that triangular piece right there. Because you can see the line in which the right-of-way is outlined. But you, you know, and we even had Gordon Stansbury look at it because that was originally set up for another lane. And there is no way right now that we can find out who owns that, so. It's a little strange.
Okay.
Well, we, we'll, we can set up a work session. I'm probably thinking that this may take longer than our, our normal one, but we can allow enough time. What's your lead time to come back after these thoughts? And I don't want to cut anybody off. I've got Kevin, Joe, still I haven't heard from Jenny, if you have any more comments?
Grazzi, you want to keep it moving, correct? Like we should come right back.
Definitely. It's been a long time coming, you know, purchasing the Pier One building now, everything has fallen into place. I really, I, I, I'm ready to go on this, even without a tenant, if I, if I didn't have it. I'm sold on the do-it. I love the wit. And this will definitely showcase this corner. I'm just, want to get everybody on board going the right way to make it the best for the community and for myself.
Okay, now Joe, Joe or Leif, did you have any more comments or Jenny?
I, I just echo what Doug had said earlier, is the traffic flow around the building. Like Jenny said earlier, you go up Route 11 and all you see is cars in line to go to drive-throughs. So you don't want that to be the distraction from Erie Boulevard. Seeing all these cars and especially in the winter, all, all the steam coming off and so on and so forth. But it's just going to have to somehow traffic wise hide as much as you can. And, you know, we, we've tried to do that with down at Dunkin' Donuts and Starbucks, you know, in the back of the building, so that's all.
Jim or Joanne, I got a question. I, I realize that obviously there's a lot of discussion here with queuing traffic. And, and I'm glad that Jenny Lee brought up the, the stacking going parking lot. Because I do think that there's some, some serious issues there that have to be addressed. But barring that, I also heard Joanne say that there's approximately a 14-foot grade change between the site, which makes it very opportunistic to development. But I'm wondering also if we can use that to our advantage to drop the grade in the front so that the cars are literally below grade a little bit. You don't really see the cars, you could kind of hide them with landscaping, but still have the building elevated. And the reason I kind of thought of that is Peter had brought up the project down in Raleigh, I believe is where it was, where they had the brick retaining wall. And it really kind of almost mimicked that where the cars were up towards the street, but you, the focus wasn't on the cars, it was on the building because they were so low.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering if that dropping the grade in the front would not help you set those, that second building a little bit more easily to accommodate a better development for that.
Yeah, it definitely does. Did we show you the, the building that, you know, Jim took a crack at? We didn't have a lot of time, but between the holidays, but, you know, Peter showed us an example. Did we show you that one? There, there you go, Peter.
Yeah. More like. I brought that up a little bit a few minutes ago. If we could bring, if we could drop the cars down a little bit and bring the building up. So the building still is prominent, but take a little bit of the emphasis of the car away by bringing it down a little bit. And definitely, the more we can bring down the site at the top end, it definitely helps us through the rest of the site, so. But then, then the balance will be not having a disconnect between this, this building and some outdoor seating and, and Erie Trail. So we, we have some, we have some fun to have here. We've got some things to work out, but.
This building is a good start, though. I'd say that. Especially if, like Andy said, if you can figure out a retaining wall and landscaping to hide that, those. Because you don't want that to be your impression as two or three. Jenny's absolutely right. I've been there. They got, you know, they're feeding into it. They're weaving their way through Starbucks parking lot to get to that. And it, it's not a quality aesthetic view at all.
Right.
In fact, it's the opposite of what we want.
It's dangerous, is what it is.
Yeah, the more we can, the more we can control Chick-fil-A's traffic, the better.
Well, you have to. We learned it. We tried to control it at Starbucks up the road. And we thought 22 cars on the, the queuing would be enough, but it's not.
Now, I, I'd also like to think that Starbucks situation right now with cars backing out onto Erie Boulevard is because they're not allowing anybody into the store. Am I correct on that?
Well, you're, they're, they're not allowing, there, you can pick up and, and order, you cannot eat in, or drink inside.
Okay.
Yeah, you're correct.
It's definitely put a strain, the COVID requirements have put a strain on all these buildings. But I do think it's probably going to be the future model, you know, that most people aren't going to go inside, at least for some period of time. So you can see how the developers are reacting to that so many different ways.
Okay, well, let's, you have more? Because I, I think we want to schedule a work session as soon as you're ready.
When would be your next available?
It's, it's two, the next two weeks is, you know, I would put it on at the end of the work session so we could have more time.
Okay. We do have two work sessions, I think, already, Peter.
No, I know that. Are you proposing a, a third, a, a, an independent work session?
I mean, we, we definitely need our architects and, and all of our board members are so valuable. I hate to call an extra one, but I, I don't know.
You know, I, I think we need one more meeting before we go electronic in terms of sending things out because there's so many questions and, and we're, I think this is, the feedback and playing off one another is very helpful. So I, I guess, I guess we'll have to call a separate meeting if that's okay. Is that amenable to the rest of the board?
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
I mean, maybe we can even do an evening. If, if the, if the, we'll, we'll send around a, us a note to our board members.
Nick and Andy, would you arrange for that? And then how soon can you be ready for your next round of drawings, Rocky and, and Joanne?
Well, I think next week sometime. We already have one that we started working on and that we can incorporate what we just received from Chick-fil-A. So I think, you know, in a, in a relatively short period of time, if we have some time next week, we can. So I think, you know, in a relatively short period of time, if we have some time next week, we can.
How about like a Thursday next week? Does that work for some people?
Yeah, I think we can definitely make that work.
All right.
I can do next Thursday.
The fact that it'll be remote will be helpful, too. All right, anything else?
Unless Grazie or Jim, you have anything else, we just need your date and time and we'll be ready to start talking.
Yeah.
Andy will provide that as soon as we get the rest of the board online.
Super.
I would really appreciate it. I know it's a lot, you know, before it's worked out, but thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again.
More thank you. That was valuable, very helpful. Geiger Automotive?
Yes, hi. QPK Design here. Andy Wright, Joe Cavender, and the owner, Rob Geiger.
Can you speak up a little bit? I don't know if anybody else is having trouble hearing you.
Is this any better?
Not much.
It's very soft.
So who is here from QPK, please?
Yep, Joe Cavender.
Joe, okay, thank you.
Andy Wright.
Thank you.
And Rob Geiger, the owner.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Can you hear me better now, Peter?
A little bit. That's okay, go ahead.
So I'd like to pull up the site plan. Stephanie, can I share my screen?
Yes, absolutely. You're welcome to do that.
All set?
Yep, looks great.
Okay. So in a current vacant lot, it's actually three parcels on the corner of Gallister Road and New York State Route 290. We are proposing a Dodge Ram dealership and service department. The building is anchored on the rear yard setback, actually side yard, excuse me, and on slash over the Town of DeWitt Village of East Syracuse property line. The proposed entrance is, the main entrance for customers is off of 290. And supplement to that are two entrances for deliveries and exits on Gallister Road. The site complies with setbacks other than the spanning over the municipal boundary on the interior of the site and complies with lot coverage, parking, and green space. The total parking count proposed is 165. The building.
Can I, I'm sorry, can I interrupt one moment? Who's speaking?
This is Joe Cavender.
Joe, does your part, when you say it relates to the parking count, are you counting the parking that's in, on the East Syracuse side? Or are you talking just about if we were in DeWitt and this was only a DeWitt project, does it meet the setbacks and, except for the one we're talking about that borders East Syracuse, and the parking and the bulk regulations?
Both. Yeah, we comply with both the Village and DeWitt if you were to look at the project as two separate.
Is two separate parcels?
Yeah.
Well, I'll let Stephanie double check that, both regulations. Okay, thanks.
Definitely. We wanted to introduce this to the board and get the board thinking about this project as we work through it, continuing through construction documents and technical documents. Just really informally, I'd like to explain the building, and I'll have Andy Wright do that, the architect on the project. So the building we're looking at is a Fiat Chrysler Automotive, so North America, the Millennium prototype. It's approximately 22,000 square feet. It's made up of three different masses. The first mass is the higher mass, the front of house, we'll call it. It's the sales side as well as the admin. As you progress to the south, it's the second mass, which is your back of house, also your service department. And in the foreground of this image right here, it's your service drive. The exterior is made up of two different materials. Both metal skin, but the envelope consists of an ACM, which is an aluminum clad material. That's a rain screen material. That's going to be on the front of house. Joanne, can I see the, sure, thanks. So when I say the front of house, I'm referring to this portion right here. That's the ACM. That's a rain screen material. This is also going to be made out of a rain screen material. The back of house is a structural insulated metal panel. Both of the aesthetics are silver in nature. There's a metallic flake in it. All glass on the project is a low E clear glazing. The building signage will be prominent on 290's side. There will be no building signage on Gallister. The badging will bear Ford or Dodge Ram with Fayetteville being the town's home name. We'll also have additional signage on the service drive that will ultimately just say service above it. We're at this point, we're at a concept stage, so we're trying to understand the MEP portions. But right now, we will have proposed rooftops. Those rooftops will, we plan on screening them with similar building material. That's basically it for the building itself. So site utility-wise, scroll back to the site plan here. We have opportunity to tie into the Village of East Syracuse sanitary system to the Page North, which is west. And the electrical power would come from Gallister to a transformer location on the side entrance, furthest north, and continue the route to the building. Public water is off of 290 on our side of the street as well as gas. Stormwater management is handled with subsurface infiltration chambers. We do have positive geotech exploration results to mitigate all stormwater controls to or below DEC mandates. We do have a planned dumpster and used tires or old tires structure here. The CMU structure and the building finish will be applied to the exterior of that as well. What are you trying to do? Zoom in to scroll. At the general overview, we welcome the board to comment and share their ideas.
What is the DOT's position on the entrance on 290?
We're currently working with them on that. And that's something undecided as of now.
So when you say undecided, is it there, it's under study or they may not allow it? Or what are you thinking? Because then this takes on a much different flavor, obviously.
Sure, yeah, that's under study with the regional permit engineer.
Okay. So from the point of view of legal, and this is, then it goes, you know, board, I, you know, can offer your input. We would, we would want to make sure that we have the appropriate cross easements. I talked to your council about that some time ago.
Yeah, thank you.
Our, the Town of DeWitt would have to give a variance, obviously, for the setback. The piece, the, what's going on over on the Village of East Syracuse side, they would need to decide, which is why my first question was, you know, as far as this site, are you meeting all the regulations? And then, you know, the question still is, you know, for board, how does this circulation work? And, yeah, we're taking into account the other site. But, you know, there would probably be permanent easements. So they, they could never really do something that would hinder circulation on the East Syracuse side.
Jamie, I may have missed this a little earlier when it was discussed with a connection. But from a jurisdictional point of view with having, is it in fact crossing over, over boundary lines?
Yes, it is.
Yes.
And what does that mean in terms of our review and application of our zoning ordinance?
We can only effectuate things on our own lot, except however, if we require as part of this transaction, like, we can't say you must have parking on the East Syracuse site or you must have, you know, certain circulation on the East Syracuse site. What we can do is require that that parcel be burdened by easements, basically.
It accomplishes the same thing.
In many respects, it would accomplish the same thing, ingress and egress easements.
And these lots are already bound together?
They're separate, they're separate lots because they're in separate towns, separate municipalities. And they cannot be merged.
They cannot.
But if you have a permanent easement, it accomplishes the same.
It accomplishes some of the same.
A portion of the building bridges across. Is that, is that what I'm seeing as well?
Yep.
Yes.
Yeah. But at the end of the day, they're going to pull a building permit from Andy, right?
I believe that the building permit that is pulled from Andy is only going to be for that which he has jurisdiction over.
So does that mean you have to get a zero lot line variance for that portion of the building which crosses the line?
Correct.
Any other thoughts?
QPK understands that we'll have two building permits after reviewing this with the Village. They will issue and monitor construction on their parcel in their municipality. And the Town of DeWitt will do the same on theirs. Our anticipation is a zero lot line variance for both the town and village to allow this to happen and cross access easements.
Okay.
The site was also designed so that the DOT entrance is not necessary in entirety. It would definitely ease circulation to the service department. On the other hand, it may be a better opportunity to have customers travel through and around the front of house to the service entrance to get the full experience of the building.
Same, same question with stormwater in terms of mitigating surface flows. And these are basically designed as two separate and independent functioning lots, correct, for stormwater?
When it comes to stormwater, it's not. This is a speed east permit, general permit, and handled by the MS4 being the town and actually the DOT on 290 frontage. So we're looking at the site as a whole as opposed to two separate units for stormwater.
Joe, Leif, do you have some comments? No, I'm good.
I'm good with this, assuming those other items, other items work until we can then dig into some of the architect stuff. Sinus and glazing issues and, and that, it's pretty straightforward.
Kathy?
I'm fine with it, Peter, right at this point.
Kevin?
I'm fine also.
Jenny?
I'm good with it as well right now.
I assume those cars that are out front are designated for planning board members?
Yes.
I thought.
Yes, they are.
I was just kidding. Next step for us, Jamie?
I mean, I, I guess that this issue of the entrance needs to be solved, right, with DOT. Also, it's hard to recommend on a variance unless we have all of the issues, that being one of them flushed out, but they certainly have to make application for the variance. And that would be the next step as well.
Okay.
Yeah, just to add to that, they would also require a special use permit to have the commercial garage function be approvable.
Correct.
And I don't think that it's been discussed yet, but the lots where it's shown within the Town of DeWitt within Gallister, there's actually two separate lots, so we'd also need to look at a subdivision to combine those.
Merger of the two DeWitt lots.
Correct.
What's the coverage on this?
Just over three acres.
No, but what's the coverage in terms of?
Eighty percent allotted.
Eighty percent, okay. Building the front entrance was handsome.
So I certainly would recommend that you start on your variance application, a special use permit. Both of those are before the ZBA, and they'd have to come back here for recommendation. Just keep it moving simultaneously with the, you know, what's going on with the DOT. And then you start giving me your cross easements and just you give me a lot merger. You've got a lot of details.
Right, right, yeah, thanks. The commercial, what do we call it, commercial vehicle maintenance, that's not permitted under an industrial.
No, just that special use is required.
Okay, understood, permit.
I just want to just query everybody in terms of the architectural, the elevations. I know they're driven by the automobile manufacturer. Is, how does everybody feel about the elevations?
Right now, it looks good.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm fine with this. It's a nice, clean, contemporary approach to things. I haven't looked at it from the point of view of how it's blending in, what's, you know, what's up and down the street on this thing. So I mean, just got to look at how we, you know, what the screening's doing, you know, site landscape work, how it all integrates into that, into this.
I agree. Okay, so gentlemen, you know what you need to do? And we're ready to provide what type of analysis and anything that you need, we'll help you with.
That sounds great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other topics? Andy?
No, I think we're all set.
Before we leave, I got everybody here, what time on Thursday for the team meeting with EDR and Grazie?
What's the date? I don't have my calendar.
Fourteenth today, so that'd be 21st?
21st.
Doug and Leif, what would be best for you?
I'm out. I'm out of town all, pretty much all morning, early afternoon. So that's out for me. I know you talked about an evening meeting. I may actually be not even able to do that on Thursday. I need to check if I have another library board meeting on Thursday.
Are we, are we talking, are we talking about evening? Are we talking about?
Late afternoon. I prefer not evening if that, unless it's the will of the people. Kevin, Jenny?
Like maybe a five o'clock or something like that?
Or 30 or five, does that work?
I could do five, but I'm actually, yeah, I'm in arbitration all day on that day, so I would, wouldn't be able to do the day.
Okay. Five o'clock?
I'll be playing it by year. I've been working out of Naples and I have to run over West Palm Beach for a meeting. So I'll be in flux, but I can, I can probably take it if you need to pull over in the car and ride over.
Why don't, why doesn't, Nick, I mean, why doesn't Nick send around a note on a couple of times and see if we can get it?
I mean, good luck with that.
Yeah, well, I mean, yes, we can, and then we'll decide who's not important.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, and I myself to that category, or who's less important, because this is this is going to be ongoing. It's.
Yeah. But we really want to get Doug and 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 Leif and Nathan involved as well as everybody. But the architects have, you know, some training in this. And this is this, we need to get this right.
What about Wednesdays? Are people available on Wednesday?
Wednesday around, you know, after 3:30 works a lot better for me.
Okay, that that works for me.
I could do. I could. I've got a 3:45. So I could do 4:30 on. But if you want to start it earlier, then I can just pitch in when I can.
How's that sound to everybody?
Yeah, the way the way did it better for me because I'll be on job sites all day. But I'll be able to pull up.
About 4:30.
Yeah.
4:30 looks good for me, too.
4:30 Wednesday, the 20th?
Yep.
Yeah.
Taking control of that.
Yeah, I didn't. I don't want to leave it to those. It's not fair. Nobody wins on trying to get a schedules come. So we'll do 4:30, the 20th. Nick, send out a reminder so Nathan and gets that. And and then also, I don't know if anybody else is on the call to let Joanne and Grassy and their team know.
Yes, I'll touch base with Joanne and her team to make sure that they would be ready for Wednesday.
Okay.
Somebody will send it in right out.
Andy?
Yeah, before everybody leaves, I do have, Jamie, what do we what do we need to do to get the mixed use overlay on the town board agenda? I know they're getting very antsy that we haven't moved on that. You're muted.
You're muted.
Sorry. Yep. The resolution is in the minutes. So why don't you send it to them? And it's right in the minutes from this last time.
Gotcha. Okay.
Ask them to please put it on.
Jamie, do you want me to send along the draft minutes? Or do you want to put them in a final version?
You know what? Contact Peggy tomorrow. We'll get them final because they were ready. You know, they're 99% ready. So she just needs to click a couple buttons and we'll get it final to you.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you, Nick.
Okay. Hey, Jenny, I don't know if I I said this before. Sorry. So if you can give me a call, do you have any time in the day to give me a call? Just to we now that we've got organized and you and Kevin are going to come into more, your designated hitter roles is going to be much more opportune going forward. So we appreciate your help and assistance on this. August Board, motion to adjourn.
I'll move, Kathy.
All favor?
I'll second it.
Bye.
Thank you, Carl.
Yep.
Good night, everybody. Good meeting.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.
Thanks, bye.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone. Good night.